Good morning, everyone. We're going, we run a few minutes behind because of the weather this morning, giving everybody a chance to get in and get sit down, get settled in. I want to welcome everybody here to the work session for January 3rd of 2022 of the Limestone County Commission. Ellen, do we have any public comments this morning?
We do. Ms. Ruby McCartney.
Ms. Ruby, if you don't mind, step down to the microphone, please. And I know Ms. Ruby's got every vehicle name, so she has got her name for her vehicle. It was why it was cold this morning. Thank you.
Yeah. Victoria went in to go putter, putter, putter. She didn't like it.
Victoria, okay.
Victoria didn't like the cold weather.
Victoria, they liked to go.
Neither did Chloe. All right. Thank you for your time. I'm here because the future of recycling for residents of Limestone County is at jeopardy. Athens Limestone Recycling Center currently leases a facility at 15896 Lucas Ferry Road, and it's being marketed for sale. Thus, we have a month-to-month lease with only 120 days notice to terminate the lease. The recycling center has also outgrown the current 13,000 square feet. I'm here today asking for your consideration of a joint venture between the Limestone County Commission and the City of Athens for the purchase of property that Athens Limestone Recycling Center would lease and will utilize for the purpose of providing recycling services for the residents of Limestone County. Various options have been discussed for some time with Commission Chairman Daly, Mayor Marks, and various other officials. Two options stand out as the most viable. One is the purchase of the current facility location and the adjacent property, which includes 14.34 acres. The current facility, which has 13,125 square feet, and an adjoining building that has 21,600 square feet, and an additional building that has 39,750 square feet, that includes office space, a maintenance shops, an additional warehouse, and a three-bay dock. That, this building is the one that we are proposing to utilize for the recycling center operations. The other buildings could be converted to storage and overflow space, and could also be used for future expansion or both. They could also be revitalized for alternate use by the city or the county. The second option is to purchase a tract of 10.9 acre tract of land on Elm Street, east of the jail, and construct a new facility. Included in the packet is a draft of a new facility that is 29,750 square feet. There has been discussion as to whether this much square footage is needed, and while I understand everyone's concern, I do feel that this much square footage is necessary for our operations to accommodate our current equipment, plus equipment that we have written grants for to help us be more efficient in our operation. Our recycling operations and needs most resemble the city of Tuscaloosa. The city of Tuscaloosa has 40,000 square feet of operation area and another 10,000 square feet of administrative office space. Detailed information on both options is included in the packet that I have prepared for your review, along with photos of Tuscaloosa and our facility. While both options are viable options, my concern is the time it takes to construct a new facility that may result in a loss of recycling services for the residents of Limestone County. We are requesting that the Limestone County Commission and the City of Athens assist us in ensuring current recycling services to the community while also planning for future growth in this area. Our mission is to fulfill the recycling needs of the residents of Limestone County and the City of Athens. We simply can't do this alone. Thank you for your time. My contact information is in your packet provided.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Ruby?
I do. What about, I know that we had, y'all voted on it, what, a week or so ago, about purchasing some property. That property out there next to the, next to the jail.
That's the 10.9.
Yeah, that would be, don't you think that would be, if we could keep open what we've got open while we built that, don't you think that would be beneficial? Because that would give you a brand-new location, a location that's got more area.
As long as we don't lose our lease before then. How much time are we talking about?
Well, I don't know. I don't know how much, I don't know how much time it would take.
That's my only thing. You know, I'm good with either one. My only concern is having to shut down recycling services for residents.
My biggest concern is, is the one on Lucas Ferry is not big enough. And it's, you need a better facility.
Well, the one that we currently have isn't big enough. But you're looking at the adjacent property, adjoining, and the other.
How much is that going to cost in comparison to the 10.9 acres?
Do you want me to go into all that, or you want to just review your packets?
Well, I'm just curious. I mean, I've just talked to a few people. I talked to the mayor and talked to a few more.
Okay.
And I know that it had to be a unanimous decision vote or something on purchasing the property, and it didn't happen, so I.
The property on Lucas Ferry, my understanding from the mayor is that they will accept 1.5 million.
Okay.
He has an estimate. I have not seen any quotes for anything, so I don't know if they're written, just. Okay, another 1.5 million. Another 1.5 million, so you're looking at three.
Okay.
But if... We can write grants to help with improvements on that building.
But with a new building, we can't.
But on a new building, I cannot write a grant and ask for, for them to build this building. They will not do it.
Yeah.
Okay, my understanding is that the property on Elm Street is at $450,000. They're anticipating another $150,000, so 600,000. By the time you finish doing all your appraisals, your everything else, all that stuff, you're looking at 600,000. The mayor threw out a figure of 3.5 to 4 million to build the facility. So apples to apples, it's about the same amount of money, you know, either way.
Well, whatever we do, it's 2022 now.
It is.
And we've got kids that are in kindergarten that are learning about recycling. Everybody across the whole United States is speaking about recycling. And I think if we think small in 2022, in 2050, we're going to be upset that we didn't think bigger in 2022.
Oh, I agree with you. That's why the facility on Lucas Ferry has almost a 40,000-square-foot building, plus another 21,000-square-foot building, plus another 1,300-square-foot building. And you're proposing building a 30,000-square-foot building there.
Yeah.
So these are, these are your two options. Whatever you decide.
We're not going to be around when it's really being used as much as it's going to be used, because it's going to be used for this younger generation of people, and it's.
We understand that.
And it's really big. We're really still kind of small in Limestone County compared to other counties is the way they recycle.
Oh, we are.
And as this generation of kids come on up, everybody, rural communities and everything, we're going to have to put stations and stuff out, more than just a trailer here and there. We're going to have to do maybe curbside, maybe roadside, maybe once a month, something like that, because we're getting bigger and bigger, so.
Oh, I agree. And that's why we want a facility big enough to handle that. If you haven't visited our facility, we encourage you to come. There are photos in there that shows you how cramped we are in our space, especially now with being able to ship, the problem with shipping things, you know? And especially this week with us being short inmate labor.
That's another thing.
I'm short six people this week.
If we're going to spend millions of dollars, don't you think we need to, the county commission and the city council, we all need to get together and figure out how to get you some employees instead of depending on inmates? Because it may be another year before they get out. I mean, I had them too, and they were out for a whole year.
I understand. I understand. They were out for eighteen months, yeah.
So I mean, you need somebody getting paid other than $2 a day that we pay these inmates to be there.
I agree. I'm not arguing with me. I just need a commitment from, you know, the county commission and the City of Athens, because we are a nonprofit. We simply can't do this alone. That's why I'm here today, asking for your help, because I cannot do it, we can't do it alone.
Did y'all discuss bringing the umbrella and bringing it under the?
We've looked into it. We've even, one time we've even appropriated some money. One time, we couldn't find any labor. You know, Ms. Ruby, we did. We tried to find labor, and you couldn't even find labor.
During the pandemic, people don't, and people don't want to do that. Not anybody. You can't get just anybody to come out and do what we do.
No.
And one of the, you know, and we've had this conversation, me and Ruby have had several times. One of the ultimate goals is to try to become the hub instead of a spoke of the recycling center.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if you know, when you become a hub, people bring stuff to you, to where we're a spoke, it's like a spoke, you know, we're, we send Decatur. Athens City sends their recycling to Decatur. The City of Athens curbside recycling does not come to Limestone County Recycling Center. And, but if we had it to where that was come there, that would be a revenue, because, you know, she makes products and sells them. It makes money off the products she recycles. And, you know, that would be, you know, that's something, you know, the City of Athens does not even, you know, does not even really, you know, they don't bring their recycling here to this facility anyway.
And we are one step closer to that, because Tuesday, our 40-foot slot line got delivered. It's not, it's not equipped yet, because there's not room for it. But I slowly am writing grants that will make us where we can be, have the City of Athens curbside back, plus be able to take others, you know, so.
And I'm fine with either option. I've looked at both options. And I mean, like I said, but I mean, it is, I mean, the option that, out there, the facility that is out there, it has a lot of potential. And I mean, but now, the new facility would have a lot of potential too. Both ways has its, both ways has its advantages and disadvantages, so. I mean, if y'all want to, I would highly recommend y'all going. I know, I know LaDon's been out there, and I've been out there, and I know.
LaDon, you haven't visited the other site, though, adjoining site. Eight to four, Monday through Friday, just hollering, I'll, I'll get you in.
And I know Mark Massey is on that recycling board, and I mean, he's on the solid waste board. He went out the other day and toured the facility and looked over. And he had, he had a lot of good options and ideas too, so. I mean, I highly recommend y'all to go out there and look at the other facility before we, before we make a decision on this. I mean, y'all, y'all evaluate both options.
The other facility on Elm Street, it had already had the ground checked and tested for another thing that they'd done years ago.
No.
Because it was a fertilizer plant, that had never been, that's never been done.
Well, some, a little bit right there, the railroad tracks has, but the property out there beside it has not.
My understanding, you've got extensive. You've got extensive testing to be done.
Yeah, it's going to take several months worth of testing on it.
That's why the extra $150,000. Plus the time it takes to do that, plus then build the building. So you're probably looking at a couple of years down the road for the buildings available, you know, for us to move into. We just have to cross our fingers and pray we can manage where we are for that long.
Well, we need it.
Oh, it is a much-needed service.
We do need it. I mean, it's, it's, I'm passionate about it. I mean, it's, it's my way to serve the community that I grew up in, and I look forward to us all being able to grow bigger and better.
Yes, and you do a good job, Ruby.
Thank you, Ruby.
Thank you.
Ms. Ruby, I thank you for all you do. All right. Ellen, do we have anybody else?
We do not.
All right. All righty, moving on then. First on here will be to approve a resolution to allow the chairman to execute and submit an application with appropriate insurance to the State of Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs, requiring application Regional Commission Grant Fund in the amount of $100,000 and $500,000 in Community Block Development Grant Fund to construct improvements to Mooreville Road. The Limestone County Commission will commit to the local match of 200,000 in the form of labor and equipment required to do the project, a portion of the proposed road improvements. Any discussion with this? I know me and Jason has worked on this for quite a while, and Mark has. This is a project that we're working on to redo Mooreville Road, and some of it will be in Danny's district too, in the intersection of Pete's Corner there. So it'll be the, that section of Mooreville Road out there is much needed, and so this is the grant we're applying for. Any discussion with it? Y'all mighty quiet this morning. No discussion with it, okay. All right. All right, on the contracts, agreements, and grants, we have one contract grant here to approve them. Memorandum of Agreement between the Limes, the City of Madison and the Limestone County Commission for Resurfacing of Bowers Road and Seagulls Road. Any discussion with this?
Yeah, this is what's already been done. This is not anything else that's going to be done. This is based on the contract that they use of hours to purchase and do the paving. So this doesn't mean, because I get calls all the time about Seagulls Road. There's a portion there that did not get paved that we're responsible for, and another portion that the City of Huntsville's responsible for, and it has not gotten resurfaced. But the portion that has been resurfaced, we're just doing the memorandum of agreement or whatever, understanding that they can use our bid for the, for the work.
Okay.
That's what that is. I know when it gets in the paper, people going, oh, yeah, we're going to get the rest of Seagulls Road paved. Well, no, that's not what this, that's not what this right here is.
Yeah, it's just an agreement between the city and the county to get it all.
Yeah.
Yep. All righty, any more discussion with that? No more discussion. We have no budget revisions, no merch purchases, no board appointments, award bids. We have one award, bid to award the Hometown Grocery on Jefferson Street for $2,371.20. This is for the food bag program at the Council Nation. Any discussion with that? All right. Personnel action will be to approve to hire Emily McGill as a corrections officer pending a drug screening. Any discussion with her? I guess it's Emery, ain't it? Yeah. Approve, approve to hire Christian Pack as a corrections officer pending a drug screening. Do we have any discussion with him? All right, approve to promote Justin Flanagan to chief deputy effective January the 1st of 2022. Do we have any discussion with him? All right, next on here will be to approve to promote Hope Woods to tag and title supervisor in the License Commission Office. Do we have any discussion with that? All right, number five will be to approve to promote Jonna Ellett to officer, office supervisor in the License Commission Office. Do we have any discussion with her? All righty, and then number six on here will be to approve to amend the staffing plan to add a facilities tax under maintenance of facilities and grounds, and approve facility tax job description. That is for the maintenance guy to go to the jail. Any discussion with that? All right, and the engineer is not here today, so we'll go through the engineering report. It'll be to approve the four subdivisions submitted here. So the first one will be Limestone Ranches subdivision, so it'll be a minor, it'll be a preliminary and final. It's south side of Batramville Road, approximately a quarter of a mile east of East Limestone Road. Any discussion with that one? It's District 1, there'll be four lots on it. The next one is McMunn Estates. It's a minor, it's preliminary and final. It's three lots in District 4. It'll be on McMunn Lane, approximately 200 feet southeast of Alabama Highway 251. Any discussion with that one? And the next one will be Kyle subdivision, it'll be a minor, it'll be preliminary and final. It'll be lots, it'll be four lots, south in District 2. It'll be on the southeast corner of Wales Road and Tide Lane. Do you have any discussion with that one? And the last one on here will be Ricket Farms Phase 2. It's a major subdivision, it'll be final, 41 lots, south in District 2. It's on the north of Pepper Road. Any discussion with that one?
I have a problem with that one, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if these folks exactly followed their drainage plan or what, but they have a lady there that they're flooding her yard. They were advised of this and asked to complete a ditch that they haven't done. They didn't do it, and she got flooded again. So until that, until that's rectified, I don't have any intention of supporting approval of that. So can we separate those out to vote on them separately?
Well, we can just take that one off if anybody, I mean, being Mark's not here today, that would probably be the smart thing to do, to explain it.
Do we have anybody here from, from that?
Anybody here in the stand from Ricket, from Ricket Farms Phase 2?
Is Mark aware of this? Yes.
Yes, he was aware of it, but he told me that that was, that this ditch was part of the Phase 1. And he was, he didn't, he didn't really elaborate on it either way.
I don't have any problem taking it off.
I don't either.
We'll just strike, we'll just, we'll strike Ricket Farms off until next commission meeting and let Mark address that issue. Yeah, Hunter's not here today, and neither is Mark, so we'll strike it off. All righty, any more discussion with either one of the other three? All righty, so we'll be removing that one and approving three. So other business here will be to remove the two following items from EMA, from inventory. Does anybody have any discussion with either item? All right, the next one on here will be to approve to fund the Limestone County Hospital a monthly appropriation in the amount of $14,625 for ongoing operation costs and repairs to the Athens Limestone Hospital Wellness Center pool. This appropriation will be distributed no longer than December the 31st of 2022, and should the pool become inoperable, that, just given appropriation, the appropriation will stop immediately. So if that's the contract that we would have with it. Any discussion with it?
Yes.
Okay.
I do. The letter that we got from, I shouldn't already had it pulled up. We got a letter from Tracy Collins, and let me find it here. All right, the letter that was from Tracy Collins, it's talking about that it's most likely going to, it says, "In response to your letter of December 23rd and request on behalf of the Limestone County Commission for the hospital to consider delaying the planned closing of the Wellness Center pool and pool facilities on December 31st. We will not agree to delay the closing of the pool through January 31st, but we will agree to extend the closing through the end of normal pool hours on January 7th." Well, I thought that was nice. And then it says, "As you know, in early November, we announced the decision to close the pool." I, I think this is, this is terrible that they announce it in November, and they're giving us just till Friday, January the 7th. I mean, it just sounds like this is kind of a rushed deal, but that's just Jason Black's opinion. "As your letter acknowledges, any delay of the closing beyond this Friday will be without any certainty. The hospital's expenses of its continued operation will be recouped from the county, city, or otherwise." Right now, it's just us. It ain't no otherwise, and it ain't no city.
Yeah.
"For us to leave the pool in operation at this time and for 2022, a funding commitment will need to be made and expressly agreed to that both pays to the hospital at least $14,625 per month for ongoing monthly operational costs and repairs, and provides for an additional obligation to replace the desert air dehumidification system. The estimated cost of the replacement of this system is $250,000, which amount is in addition to other HVAC updates forthcoming at the facility. Further, the desert air system is 23 years old. If it goes out, the pool will be out of service immediately." Why are we, why are they assuming that the pool's going to go out before January the 7th? I mean, I don't understand why, why we're sitting here and we're saying it could go out, it might go out. If it goes out, we're going to close it. Why not keep it open until it goes out? That's, that's my, that's my thing. I don't have a problem with the monthly operational costs, but this is, again, like I said before, this is kicking the can down the road and just. Then it says, "We did not solicit any additional appropriation or funding." Well, that means that they really didn't want to keep it open. If they didn't come to us and ask us for it. "But in consideration and appreciation of your requests, we will extend the planned closing a few additional days for the commission to take the matter up today. If a commitment for the above expenses of the pool's continued operation and maintenance are not approved, we will close the pool on January the 7th, 2022." Tracy Collins, President, Athens Limestone Hospital. The only problem that I have with all of this is Athens Limestone Hospital hasn't come before us and asked us for anything. They've sent us a letter.
Is there anybody from the hospital here now?
I mean.
Representing the hospital?
If I wanted to keep it open, and I work for Athens Limestone Hospital, and I were Tracy Collins, President of Athens Limestone Hospital, I would be here with my hat in my hand today, and I would say, please help us. We want to take care of our people in Limestone County and Athens, Alabama, but they ain't here. They not here, because they don't want the pool to stay open. All right, that's it, in a nutshell. So my thing is going to be, we're, I'm, I'm going to be for this $14,625 later on today. And we're going to see if, it's kind of like my daddy used to say, they're going to put up or shut up. One of the two. And the $250,000, we can talk about that later on. But this right here, this, I mean, a letter, I mean, come on, it's addressed to one person, it's addressed to the chairman, which it's supposed to be. But I mean, no one's called me from the hospital. No one's called me from Huntsville, Athens, the Wellness Center. I mean, this is just kind of like, this is, this is a pass fire. They sticking in everybody's mouth and making us just take it. So if, my thing is, we're, I'm going to help. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to help. And I don't know what the other three men are going to do. I, I kind of got a good idea what they're going to do, because they tired of getting it shoved down their throat too. And so at the end of, today at 10 o'clock, we'll have a vote on this, and we're going to, we're going to make them put up or shut up. That's just, that's what it's going to do. So we'll either approve it or not approve it, but I'm, I'm tired of them saying, well, if you don't do it today, we're going to close it tomorrow. I mean, that's, that's kind of childish, but I, I see who we're dealing with sometimes, and that's just the way it goes. So that's my, that's my 50 cents. If y'all got anything else to say, y'all?
I do. I, I read that like they're losing $14,000 a month operating costs.
Yeah.
Due to probably lack of participation. They don't have enough people to fund the operation. So we're, we're being asked for $14,625 a month to subsidize the pool operations of the Wellness Center and outside entity. My understanding that there's less than 100 people using the pool. Well, that's $146 per month, per person, or $175,000 a year to keep a pool open. I believe there are other options. I'm not going to be for funding that. Statistically, 50% of these 100 people should live in eastern Limestone County with access to the Madison Wellness Center, which the enrollment covers. My understanding, Sports Fit in Athens has a $25 pool membership that's available. Now, I don't know what kind of pool it is. I just read that. If this appropriation is approved, another concern I have is that it would set a precedent when various facilities are unable or unwilling to continue services in our county. Where do we draw the line? Huntsville Hospital has an obligation of sustainable health care to Limestone County, and they can't do that with programs that they lose $14,000 a month on. So I'm not going to be for this resolution.
The sad thing is, we don't know, I mean, the $14,625, is that what they spending now on the maintenance every month?
Exactly. And we don't, we don't, we don't know that.
But this $14,625 is, is coming out, it's not coming out of our general fund. It's coming out of a fund we can't spend anywhere else. So my, my, my argument for, and I understand yours against too, I really do. My argument for is, it's $14,625. We can't spend on a road. We can't spend on a merit increase. We can't spend on putting shingles on a new building. We can only spend it on this, and if for one year, I mean, if we pay it $14,625 this month, and they close it next month, this is all over with anyway. So we're going to see if they, we're going to see if this really is it, because I don't know if they thought we were going to pass this or not pass it or what. So I think they're, they, they may not be biting their fingernails, because I don't know if they, either, either side really is concerned about it. But that's, that's my only thing. I understand your side too. The only thing is, is that if you say Sports Fit, if Sports Fit's pool goes down, it's a private entity that we're not responsible for anything with public health. So that's a whole different ballgame. It'd be kind of like, you know, someone's backyard pool going out. We can't fix it either. But this being under the hospital, that money, from what I understand from Emily, we can, we can spend it for this, and that's, that's, that's my only, that's my reasoning. I see your side as much as you probably do, but this is just, let's just see how bad they want to swallow it.
Well, I see that we, I've had several phone calls about this pool. And if you see up here in the crowd, we got a lot of support here today for this pool. And I feel like, you know, there's probably some people that use that pool that might not be here today if, if it wasn't for that pool. So I'm going to be in support of it because of that, because I have a 93-year-old grandmother. She doesn't use the pool. But if she did, I'd sure be fighting to keep it open, because I know there's, you know, a lot of people that use it now, and I don't care if it ain't but 50. I think Huntsville Hospital ought to keep this open for our people in Limestone County. We give them $500,000 a year, and I don't think it's being spent in Limestone County. I think it's being spent somewhere else, and it should be spent here. So I'm in support of it, and I hope that, you know, I don't know how y'all feel, but I, I think this is something we need to do. And if they don't, if they don't keep it open, then, you know, obviously, you know, we'll know then where they stand. But, you know, I think we're going to make them put up or shut up, like Jason said, you know?
I feel the same, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any problem putting it on, on our meeting agenda to be voted on. Just bring it to a vote. I feel like a lot of times we, you know, health and rehab is, is a big issue in our county, and, and I appreciate folks, you know, that do use this facility. I hate we're having to go through this, but that's just part of it, and I hope everything works out. But I don't have any problem with it.
Yeah, and I, and if I lived on the East Limestone side, and I was closer to Madison, I, you know, I might choose to go that way.
Sure.
But that's, I'd choose to go that way. If I lived at East Limestone in Kepshaw, and I wanted to go to where my county commission is spending their money, and our local hospital, which my children were born in Athens Hospital, I was born in Athens Hospital. When I get sick, I go to Athens Hospital. I did Thanksgiving Day. I could go anywhere across North Alabama. I went to Athens Limestone Hospital, because it's my local hospital, and they provide good service.
Yes.
So why not, why, why would they tell us, hey, you know, if we close this one, you can go to another one of our facilities? And we're, no, that's, that's, that's not our facility. That's Madison County's facility. So that's it. I'm, I'm done, because I get a little mad and I'll start mumbling.
We got one commission born in Lester Hospital.
We do, right here.
Right here, the last person born in Lester Hospital, right there.
It's the reason they shut it.
But I go to Athens. It's a fact. It's a fact.
You know, and then the discussion of the $250,000 for the central heating and air, I have had discussion with a delegation on that, and that is something that they are looking into. And I haven't, I did reach out to the hospital, and I did. that they are looking into. And I haven't, I did reach out to the hospital, and I did talk to them. I said, "There's no way that the county commission could do that at this point." And I said, "They understood," and I said, you know, and I said, "You know, my deal is, there's other groups out there that is, I think is interested in taking over this Wellness Center. I know that there's been talk of like YMCA's and places like that taking it over. And all I'm doing is, I'm trying to give the public an opportunity to see that through, you know what I mean? 'Cause I mean, I know there's a lot of people, I mean, everybody in this audience right here is evidently is supportive of the pool, and I thank y'all for coming out today, and, um...
For the Wellness Center in general.
Wellness Center in general. You know, and what scares me is, is, you know, if the Wellness Center in general is not their money-making operation, they make their money-making operation off the hospital, and I, and I understand that. But that center over there has a lot to keep people out of that hospital, too.
That's right.
You know, I mean, I'm talking about through the walking, and I mean, I talked with this morning with, with our ex-attorney, Mark Macklin. I, I talked to him pretty often, you know, just, I kidded him this morning, was he out walking in the snow? He said, "No, I'm over to Wellness Center." So, there's people in my age group that use that Wellness Center, too, and I know Hella Roost had been over this morning. She said she's been over at Wellness Center. She does talk to me this morning. And there's a lot of the Wellness Center, and I, and I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm more worried about the whole future of the whole Wellness Center as a whole.
Yes.
And I mean, I just don't want this pool to be the tip of the iceberg. But, I mean, I wanna try to help get this thing guided into a, and all we're doing is, here today, is we're making it for one year, and it's not gonna be any further for right now. It's just something to try to give the community an opportunity, some other options out there, and to see if we can find somebody to take this thing and make a go with it. So, that's where we're at today, and with a, with a hope of the support of these people, and I, I thank everybody for coming out today. And does anybody else have any more discussion with it?
I, I've just got some comments about his statement. You were saying probably fifty percent of the people live in the East Limestone area. Where does that leave the other fifty percent, the ones driving from Rogersville to Madison? And not only that, the sport, the Sports Flex Pool is very small, very shallow. It's like swimming in your bathtub. And then Huntsville, you have to go online and register daily to save your spot because they can't take the overflow. So, you know, it, it's not as simple as you get far and drive a few more miles and forget about the west side of county. That's all I can say.
Thank you.
And normally, we don't let just comments come in a meeting like this, but, but today, you know, I mean, we've got twenty-five minutes here, and I think everybody has pretty much spoke their mind. If anybody had, I know Mr. Stock was raised his hand two or three times.
Well, I just wanted to point out one thing. They can say, "Go to the Madison Facility."
Right.
The Madison Facility has been out of operation for over three weeks now, and there's no prospect for when it will be put back into service. The bottom line is, it appears they do not wanna operate these facilities. They're not turning a profit, and if you don't try, nobody in business will turn a profit. If it's, uh, such a miniscule part of their overall business, may not be worth the effort to it. What Mr. Daly is saying is, there's a whole bunch of us out here gonna work our tail ends off to come up with an option to keep the Athens Limestone County Wellness Center open and functioning. Somebody was talking about two thousand and fifty? Well, in two thousand and fifty, the reality may be that there'll be enough of us older, broken-down people that that's the only place we can get vigorous exercise. You get to a point in your life where a pool is wonderful because there's the biggest cause of injury and disability for people over seventy years old is falls. There's one thing you can't do in a pool. You cannot fall. That's the reason it is such a vital physical fitness facility. And yes, Huntsville Hospital can say, "Go to the Madison Facility," but if they're not operating it either, that's just so much effort dust in the wind.
Kicking the can down the road.
Yes, exactly. And so, this, this will give us an opportunity to work, and we're gonna work extremely hard. We're gonna succeed. We're gonna come up with a way to keep that facility open in Limestone County, because the people of Limestone County have paid for that facility.
And I think, and I, along with Mr. Stockler, I think that there's enough support. Now, I don't think anybody has an issue with membership fees being a little more. Everybody I've talked to has, there's not, that's not the issue. The issue is, is not having the opportunity to, to do it. And, um, and I, you know, and I think that with this, this gives us an opportunity to look into the future, to see. And I mean, I'm just, you know, I mean, it just, when people in this community, you know, you know, it, you know, two months is just not enough time to change. You know, if you've got a lifestyle going one direction, I'm kinda like, you know, I mean, I agree with Jason on that. You know, one of these things, you know, you, two months is not a lifetime to change. You know, most time when you, if you gonna have a baby or anything, you know, you have nine months to get prepared. You know, if you're getting married, you know, most time you get prepared. Just right here, you just, I mean, you, no, two months is not long enough to get prepared, to change, to go somewhere else.
And with all due respect to politicians, we've got to work with legislators, and the legislature, and the city council, and you know, those things do not move that fast.
No, and that...
Not when you're talking about something of this magnitude, quarter of a million dollars, still big money in Limestone County. May not be in some places. The Limestone County, that's still a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
And, and there's, you know, you can look at the facility, nobody wanted to keep it open. Nobody wanted to keep it maintained. There are roof leaks over there that haven't been repaired in over a year. If you wanna keep a facility open, you fix the roof. They don't want to. So, give up, give us citizens an opportunity to go out and come up with a solution that will keep this thing open till two thousand and fifty, because the population of Limestone County is getting older and older. Twenty-three years ago, when they built that Wellness Center, I'm gonna confess here in public, I thought it was just another wasteful boondoggle of public money. I'm wrong, big time, big time wrong, because I'm at a point today at seventy-six years old where that is the only place I can get vigorous exercise, to fight off diabetes, uh, arthritis. I won't explain how my doctor described the arthritis I've got. It's a little burger, but it's, I've worried my body. All right, so, it's, it's the only place I can do it. And everybody doesn't get there. You say a hundred, or a hundred and fifty, or whatever number. What number is so small that it's insignificant? That's my question. If it's ten people, do we just say, "Ten people don't deserve a chance to have health and wellness"? Uh, do we start closing facilities because they can't make money?
Well, in thirty years, I'll be eighty-two, and I plan on racing Helen Ruth Duncan across the pool then or sometime. 'Cause she'll be here, I promise you that.
Well, she will be, and you better get your big butt in shape.
Yep, you got it.
We've got a lady up top that's had her hand up the whole time, and I'm gonna let her speak in just a second.
I'm, uh, my name's Deanna, and I'm a part-time instructor at the Wellness Center. I echo everything that man said, and it's really an emotional thing for me. People can't exercise. They can't walk. They can barely breathe. They get in that water, and their whole demeanor changes. It's like almost a miracle. And it's not only the exercise, it is a social outlet for so many people. This is their only opportunity to visit with other friends because all of a sudden, they feel healthy, they feel good, they're not in pain. And the other thing, we're, we're very new to Alabama. This is our second year here. It took me over a year to find this place. It's not very well advertised. It is the only place I just like where my grandson learned to swim, and we live on the Elk River. I mean, I spent nights thinking, if he gets down to that river, he's, he's gonna die. It's not advertised for swimming for little kids. There's opportunities to actually make it, maybe not cover all the, the costs every month, but to increase participation. I have no idea what the Athens Swim Team is going to do. I spoke to a lady just last week, she had two young people in there, swimming their hearts out. They had no other place to go. So, and there's other things. I mean, give us an opportunity to at least try to make this facility work. And with as fast as Limestone County is growing, this is gonna be so necessary for, you know, our young people coming home. So, hey, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And that's, you know, that's one of the things, you know, it's not just y'all's age group this pool's affecting, it's also affecting the younger generation out here in swim team. And plus, you know, if we, one child, you know, if they teach, I know that there's a lot of people teaching lessons for babies to float if they swim and all, you know, I mean, we save one person's life, you know, that never live life, that's a, that's a plus, too, you know?
Right.
One more question here, then we're gonna wrap it up.
I'm actually, I am the coach of Athens Ice Cream Swim Team, and we have not been able to use that pool for two years, mostly because of COVID. Um, it is not ideal for competition, but it's the only place in Limestone County. So, I've taken twenty kids from A- Athens, Limestone County, to Decatur, three times a week for two years now. Um, I also have been involved with the Athens Gators Swim Team, the Red League Team, and they did use the Wellness Center, except for this year, they're scrambling. They've got probably, we had over a hundred kids, Limes, all of Limestone County that participated in Athens Rec League Team, um, almost a hundred and twenty-five, record number of kids this year, and they are scrambling. We usually start in February at the Wellness Center, and that is not an option this year. And they are scrambling, trying to find somewhere to get almost sixty kids in the water.
And one of the other things...
Well, is, is Athens been asked, the city of Athens been asked to contribute to this?
They have been brought into the conversation.
What was, what was their response?
At the time, they weren't able to get involved, but the local delegation is behind it. I mean, Senator Tom Butler, he has reached out to how much he supports it, and...
Why does the city of Athens not as, have much interest in it as we do?
There has even been conversation, I know Mr. Stockler was in on this conversation, um, that the city of Athens even talked about maybe putting it into parks and rec at one time. You know, I mean, there's, it's a, you know, with the way this county's growing, and that pool is twenty-three years old, who's to say we don't need a bigger pool? I mean, no, I mean, and that's the option. I just don't want us to be without.
No.
And then, you know, I mean, they may be, by this time next year, there may be somebody, just like we was talking about this recycling, that we was talking earlier, you know, the way we're growing, you know, it may be options to build a bigger, newer, nicer facility. You know, I don't know, but I mean, we're just trying to go through right now to see where we can go today. Um, well, I guess we need to move on, 'cause I know we're gonna have to start again here in just a minute. Um, no schedule, public hearings, report of officers. Commissioner Sammet, do you have anything today?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got a couple of things. I want to thank everybody for coming out today, and, and want you to know that we'll do all we can. I'm sure this is, this commission's behind you, I guarantee you. Hopefully, it'll work out. Also, while Ms. McCartney's here, I've got an issue that I'd like to touch base and leave. Uh, last week, I had to deal with a, an issue where folks had, uh, bought a house, and, uh, everything that was in the house goes out in the ditch. And, uh, in talking with Ms. Johnson, who took Carol Farr's position, I know you know her, don't you, Ms. McCartney? Carol Farr with the Health Department?
Okay.
Okay, yeah. She, uh, anyway, she retired, and Ms. Johnson, lady out of Madison, moved over here and took her place. We, uh, uh, folks putting these, all this trash and all in the ditches, of course, you know, you know what it looks like. And, and our problem is, we live right beside Madison County, which has bulk pickup. And, uh, you know, the, the county does pick it up, but the Madison County, I heard, pays sixty-five meals on their property tax, too. We're paying, you know, you pay thirty here in Limestone. But anyway, uh, she suggested that we send out a flyer with the, uh, maybe the utility bill, and I'd like to get with y'all to see if you might, might help me in, in, uh, writing up a flyer that would, uh, cover this issue, to let folks know, the folks that had bought the homes were from Madison County, and they were used to doing that. Well, we need to, we need to, and hopefully, the rest of the commission would be interested in sending it out, because, uh, I think we need to let our folks know that we do not have that service, you know?
And I've told them before, and then we've gone out there with the excavator and moved it out of the ditch and set it in the middle of their yard before, too.
Exactly.
They'll figure, they'll figure that out really, really quick.
Well...
They get two, they get two calls, and then they get it put in the driveway, so...
But you had to take that time to send that equipment and that man.
Yes.
A whole swimming pool was one of them.
Oh, well, that worked.
What could've used that?
Look at that.
But anyway.
I am happy to help with, with anything, any flyer, anything. I would make a suggestion, and this is because my, one of my careers before I came to this one. If you could get with your board of realtors and create something for them to be able to hand out to residents that move into this county, explaining to them, because I did that with, for the realtor that I work for, to let them know where utilities were, you know, residents in the county, cities, where they have county, city water, and let them know what their options are. If we could put it in some, and I'm happy to help with creating, you know, some kind of flyer that, and, and I think that's the best way to get it into people's hands that are coming into this county, and utility thing, and working with the board of realtors.
Okay.
That would be my two suggestions.
Yes, ma'am.
And work with our commerce as well.
Yeah, well, auctioneers, I mean, any folks like that. But I think that's something the commission would support a hundred percent, too. But the way we're growing, we're gonna have to do something to let these folks know. And it's not their fault, uh, you know, it's, it's just...
For a lot of them don't even realize that the transportation is an auction, and it's not expensive.
Exactly. So, that, that's something we'll address in the flyer, okay?
Okay, but I just wanted to bring that up, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, thank you.
I, I agree with Darryl. That's a problem. Uh, District Two, we have a lot of trash dump, dumped, and I've been looking at the junk and debris law. Uh, you have to send them a letter, and that's something, really, to send the letter, you're supposed to be a designate. So, we may wanna look at something where each one of us is a designate to send that letter. Uh, if you find their name in garbage, help me here, Mr. Deal, if I step, get out of line there. If you find their name in the garbage, it's called a presumptive what? Presumptive they're guilty unless they can prove...
They violated the...
Presumption that they violated the law, unless they can send you a letter and tell you why they didn't. Now, that's probably difficult to prove, so I don't, I've just sent out a letter. We'll see how that works. But trash is a problem for all districts, I would think.
Yeah, they're susceptible to a five-hundred-dollar fine.
And I think we need something with some teeth in it, you know? Uh, well, like, when they dumped that garbage out on the road, that was a violation of the junk and debris law, I would think.
Yeah, it is. It is, and that's something...
But I agree with Darryl.
All right, thank you, Sarah. Got anything else?
That's all.
Mr. Black?
Uh, I just wanna say this real quick on the recycling part. This isn't something that we need to talk about today, and then four months from now, Ruby, come back in here and talk about it again. Uh, I think we need to, uh, because this, until you brought this to us today, and I heard through the grapevine, this is the first time I've heard anything about it, because I asked Darryl about it, and I asked LaDon about it, and I really had no clue that all this was transpiring. Uh, somebody should, we should've been, we should've been told about it. From, the mayor should've called us or something and said, "Hey, this is happening." But, uh, I'd like to have a meeting where, I know we can't have all of us meet together, a joint meeting, but where, uh, maybe the chairman and, uh, somebody else could go meet with the mayor and find out what they think about, because I understand that the board, we had one descending vote, and that one descending vote is the one that killed the whole issue of purchasing the property. Is that right? Boy, if we had one descending vote on everything that we ever voted on up here, we'd never get nothing done. And that, that, that's, I, I don't know who drew up those rules and regulations, but that's kinda crazy. So, I'm always gonna be against something if everybody else is for it, so that's just part of it. Uh, so, I'd like to do that. Uh, if y'all, if y'all would like to, let's figure out, for chairman to get it together where we can find out what we need to do, because this is not something that's, we can just keep putting off. We ju, we, our pile's getting bigger and bigger, and we need to get rid of it, so...
And as far as it's something that we wasn't gonna vote on in seven days, we could all get together and have, I mean, you know, like a, you know, they could, you could, Ruby could come present it to us, you know, as long as it's something that we're not deliberating on voting on within seven days. Isn't that right?
That's right.
That's right. So, I mean, we could actually have a meeting.
That's good.
As long as we're not deliberating over it and say, you know, I mean, it would be something that Ruby could come present. She could present a project to us as a whole, and I get Drew to work on that. That's something we probably all look into, is, you know, get with the city and all.
Yeah.
And that was one of the things I had a little issue with that day was, is too, you know, that, we had a, we had, when we're trying to commit to buying a piece of property, we're obligating the county commission to something that y'all wasn't involved in. So, I think it needed to been a vote brought in front of the county commission to where we would've done it instead of the other way. So, anyhow, enough about that. Um, we'll get to...
I'm done.
Done. Mr. Townsend?
Uh, I wanna thank everybody for being here. I mean, we've had these discussions, I think, for the last couple meetings, and the, the people from the pool has showed up every time. I mean, it's a, it's, it's great to see people, you know, come together like y'all have, and fight for something that you want. And also, I wanna thank, uh, the storms Saturday night. Me and Colin was out for a long time Saturday night cutting trees, and I wanna thank the fire departments, the EMA, the Athens Utilities, and all the volunteers that came out. Uh, I think I got out about four-thirty, and I think it was midnight that night when we got done. I mean, it was a, it's a, it's a pretty big mess up around the Lester community, over around Minor Hill Salem, on into, uh... I mean, it was a, it's a, it's a pretty big mess up around the Lester community, over around Minor Hill Salem, on into, uh, going into Elkmont. So and I think it had some, some damage on, on, in the county. But anyway, I just wanna thank them because it's a, uh, like I said in one of my posts I put on Facebook, you know, living in this county, it, when we get where we need, like y'all here, you know, everybody shows up and wants to do a good thing and wants to help. And the other night, we just had so many people that were showing up, bringing their chainsaws. I got a buddy that lives in Green Hill, called me. Hey, I've got my chainsaws. Do you need me? I mean, don't even live in this county. So I mean, you know, that's a, that's a testament for Limestone County and that, that means a lot to me. But anyway, I just wanna thank all them people for coming out and helping us. That's all I got. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. I'm like, Mr. Townsend, you know, I wanna thank publicly the volunteer fire departments in this county. I know that a lot of times, they're, they're all volunteers, you know, and they're out there with us working at night and I mean, they stayed out there with us till midnight the other night and I mean, they went out there for no compensation, no nothing. They were out there, you know, just because they're strictly volunteered to be out there and that's what makes a community and I'm proud of the community we have here. And, um, wanna thank everybody for coming out and supporting the pool. I know that it's strengthened numbers and y'all have brought a lot of people out to support of it today. And thank everybody for coming out and we will recess until ten AM, which is about six minutes, so give a few moments here and we'll recess and come back and, and be back in meeting. Thank y'all.